We'll call a Shakopee's August 21st, 2012 City Council Meeting to Order. Please take the roll.
Counselor Sherman, absent. Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabkey, absent.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda? Mark.
Counselor, we have one item. 4D4 would be proposed as the number as it could be consented agenda and it's authorizing a change order with Valley paving not to exceed $20,000 for County Road 18 trail improvements. Copy of that is on your desk this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, second by Mr. Clay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent business? Anything do you add or subtract from the consent agenda?
We had on the table...
4D4.
Move the consent business with the addition of item 4D4.
Second.
4D4 removed?
Added to the consent.
Okay. I'm going to ask that we remove 4D3 and 4D4.
4D4?
Yep.
Try read those.
Any other changes? Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda as modified, removing 4D3 and 4D4, seconded by Mr. Clay. Mark, will you read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Counselor. 4A1 approves of use of park reserve funds in an amount of $5,000 to construct a new outdoor drilling station at Lyons Park. 4B1 authorizes appropriate city officials to enter into a police mutual aid agreement with Minnesota Department of Corrections Shakopee facility. 4B2 approves of $1,500 payment from the Shakopee Police Department of Strategic Orphanage Fund to the meth task force for drug prevention presentations in the Shakopee School District. 4C1 adopts resolution number 7222 preliminary and final plat of Valley Park 17th addition located between 12th Avenue and US 169 and east of County Road 83. 4D1 authorizes an extension agreement with WSBN Associates for design and bidding of the L-16 lift station sewage grinder. 4D2 approves of traffic control change for 13th Avenue and Polk Street intersection adding a two-way stop sign. 4D3 and 4D4 were removed from consent agenda. 4F1 approves of payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $2,379,554.06. 4F2 approves minutes of the City Council meetings of July 31st and August 8th, 2012. And 4F3 authorizes a replacement of 28 light fixtures at Shakopee Police Station in amount not to exceed $23,000 to be paid from the general government building's internal service fund.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 40. Turn the meeting back over to Mayor Tabkey.
Thank you very much, sir.
We just completed the consent agenda. We are on...
Item five? All right. Thank you very much for getting started without me. I appreciate it. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by City Council. Got a lot of folks out here tonight. It's my first time looking up. Thank you. Is there anyone who has anything not on the agenda this evening that we would like to discuss? Yes, sir. Yep, come on to the podium. Let us know who you are, where you're from.
Should I speak in the little speaker here?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Tom Scott.
Sign in as well.
Yep, I'll sign in. No problem. Tom Scott, 1988 Evergreen Lane in Shakopee. I have some stuff printed off, too. I don't know if I can bring it up for you guys.
Please do. And we are not going to take any action on anything tonight, just so you're aware. Mark will hand them out for you.
Thank you.
So I'm representing a few different homeowners in our development. We live up in Valley Creek Crossing. We've experienced some water drainage issues that have been there kind of since the development was run. A member that we actually, well landscaping company, Curbside, their local company, Al King, he actually owns the company. He went and put together a proposal for us. There's the last, I think, two pages of the pamphlet there. But he put a bid together just to get rid of the drainage. He put a French drain from the back of the property lines up to the front. And then also Alex, he lives in my neighborhood, he actually had Al come out and there's some drainage issues. If you look at the very last page where the park is, they need to put in like a swale or something to get rid of that water because it's just not draining properly. So that's kind of what we're looking for assistance from the City Council for, for funds to repair that. Bruce, I personally didn't speak with you. I know my neighbor Steve Bloom did. And then we also spoke with Joel Swentek. They said that this would be the best route to go, to sit down, come to you guys. And I don't know if from that point we get on the agenda from there, but anything that we can do is appreciated.
All right. Do you have any questions for Mr. Scott? Ms. Lehman?
Mayor, I'm looking at the pictures here and I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
Sure. I noticed when we popped up there, I don't know who opened the file, but they had some pictures of our addresses as well. The big tall cat tails. Bruce, do you have that?
We, do we need to get that far into it this evening?
If you want to refer it to staff, I think that would be the appropriate thing to do. Also, if we could note for the record that Counselor Sherman has joined us.
Oh, you're Bruce, okay. Sure. Oh, okay. Good to meet you. So you have something there?
Yeah. I don't know if Bruce wants to chat real quick. All right.
It's been an issue that... In this, in this development, Valley Creek Crossing, we've had areas of groundwater and surface water issues. In this particular case, this is a 2010 area. This house isn't built yet. Your neighbor, it is now.
Yep.
At the time, it wasn't built. And you can kind of see, if you just look at this, you can see some wet areas. And when we've been out there, the water just keeps oozing out of the hillside. It's a groundwater issue more than it is a surface water issue. And the neighbors can contest here, Tom. I mean, right across here, water kind of oozes across the sidewalk in this area. This is, we have a drain tile, this green line right here, there was a drain tile installed with the development with the purpose probably of extending drain tile as these houses got built. So there is something there. There is also a drainage channel down here, conservation channel, that we probably could take the water in the backyards to the park down in there, too. So that's some of the things we've been looking at. The pictures that I've taken, if I can... Right here. Whoops. There's a full screen. This is to give you an idea of some of the backyards. This is 1964 Evergreen Lane looking in the back. This is between the park and that. This is fairly dry in here, but there's, you can see there's some area that just can't be mowed back in that area. This is 1972 and 1980, between those two houses right here. And this is, right in back in here is very wet. A lot of cat tails in this area. Can't be mowed. And then this is 1980, the, in the backyard here. And again, it's very wet in that whole area. And then this is Tom, this is your house right here to the left, and Steve's house. And then here's a bunch of cat tails down this lot line and water oozing over the sidewalk in this area. And this will be going down the park area. Again, there's some wet area here. This drainage swale kind of got filled in. One option would be to take the water through a drain tile pipe to the west or come down, connect into the storm sewer system here or into the drain tile that's along the street. But there's effects for houses in our city park. So it probably needs to be some kind of a storm drainage project. We did something similar, and I think Matt, you were on the council at the time, we did with Westminster. We had a drainage problem in the backyards. I think the City Council at that time authorized a 50/50 split between the homeowners and the city on making that improvement. So that's the story, that's the situation.
Counsel Lehman?
Bruce, did you say that when these lots were developed, drain tile was supposed to be put in between the houses?
No.
Okay.
Drain tile is along the street here. That drain tile from these houses could have been put underneath the sidewalk into there.
Okay. All right.
But this area, I think a lot of these houses, I don't know, just didn't like to put drain tile.
Steve's builder said they weren't allowed. I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah. Steve kind of...
What's his last name?
Long?
Dalloun?
Dalloun. He basically said that he was not allowed to hook up. So I don't know the situation there, but there might have been some more to that story. But there was drain tile here. The water really surfaces in the back and then it just saturates the ground into swales.
Not long enough. Kind of goes like that in the middle. So it's not flowing straight down.
Well, I'm a little confused as to why this is a city issue? Why is this our, why is this not just your issue and why is it ours? Yeah.
Because in the beginning, when they developed that land, you know, that should have been, you know, approved by the city and plotted out and done right. Al King, who lives next to the park, you know, he was telling the city guy who was out there at the time that, you know, the water's not going to drain because they're putting in berms. And, you know, my background's real estate, and I deal with this a lot of times, too. And that definitely should have been something that was done by the developers in the city. It shouldn't be pinned on the homeowners. If they would have done it right, they probably would have put a big, you know, culvert in the back, drained it out, and put some swales back there and ran drain down. That probably should have been done in the very beginning.
Do you agree with that assessment, Bruce?
That's hindsight, which is always 20/20.
Sure. Right.
Should have, could have, could have. The reason that this, I mean, there's plenty of grade. There's grade here along the, in the back lots here. It's just that the groundwater just seeps, keeps it so wet, it's just soggy and it stays wet all year. This was something that wasn't evident at the time when we were doing the grading, the mass grading of the subdivision. It's kind of surfaced over time.
Is this an item that we would like to send to staff and come back to us? Or what do you guys think? Counsel Lehman?
Yeah, I would make a motion to refer it to staff for, to look that over and go from there.
Okay. Are there other thoughts on that? Did, I'm sorry, did you actually make a motion?
I did.
All right. So we need a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Clay. Discussion. Counsel Sherman, when you have something, make sure to wave for me so I can know that you're there. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Passed unanimously.
Question?
Yes.
Pamela, could you give us a sound check?
Yeah. Hello. John told me he needed on mute me when I needed to talk, so.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you, sir. It will be coming back, the next meeting or after, probably?
As soon as we can. We'll try for the meeting on the 4th of September.
All right. Well, attempt for the 4th of September. Okay? Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
My name's Mike Luce. I've got some questions about the signage going up by the schools with the speed limits lowering.
Hold on to that until we get to it. It's an agenda item.
Okay. So I have a chance to talk then?
Yep. Yep, yep, yep. You'll get a chance. Anything else? All right. Thank you much. Moving on to item number six, public hearing. I would like a motion to open a public hearing. Counsel Whiting?
We'll open a public hearing.
Second by Counsel Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Correct?
Counsel Sherman?
Counsel Sherman?
She's frozen, baby.
Should we go with 4-1? Counsel Sherman, did you vote in the affirmative on that last?
In the affirmative.
All right. We are now in public hearing. Item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this is, as you know from your report, a request of RAR Malting Company to vacate a number of sections of right-of-way within their area in which they operate. They include portions of Adams, Washington, Webster, Cass, Clay, Pierce, and Shumway Streets and a number of sections of public alleyways that total approximately 30,473 square feet. In your packet and for the audience, the area generally that we're talking about for RAR's operation is located on the west side of Old Shakopee along County Road 69 and is highlighted in yellow here on Exhibit A. The specific sections that they're requesting vacation of are depicted on this exhibit, which was prepared by Sunday for RAR Malting. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which recommended 4 to 0 that you approve the vacations with conditions specifically related to easements requested by the city's engineering department and by Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. You have action in front of you specifically based on that recommendation in Resolution Number 7223 approving a vacation of public rights of way subject to those requirements that are set forth in the Engineering and SPUC memo. I'd also just note, as you probably did in the report, Excel Energy did note that they have several underground feeders along First Avenue that will be abandoned after August 30th of this year. So with that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Lehman?
Mr. Leake, is there any streets that are currently in use today that they're requesting to vacate?
No, Counselor Lehman, there are not. They are all used internally by RAR in their operations, but not by the public.
Second follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Is there any properties owned by anybody else that would be landlocked by this action?
No, there are not.
Okay.
Counsel Clay?
How many of these actually have buildings or structures over them?
I'm not sure I can answer that question tonight. There are a few that do. We've had a couple of meetings in the past with RAR, but I can't give you a complete answer this evening.
Any questions? Counsel Clay?
This is a lot of, a lot of area to be vacating. I'm not seeing anywhere in the memo any discussion about payment for it.
Counselor Clay, members of the council, the determination that you reach in a vacation is whether or not there is a remaining public purpose for those rights of way. And since these are within the area of operation of RAR Malting's operation and are not used by the public, the Planning Commission and staff felt that that justified that finding. Typically, in the case of vacations, the city does not request or require compensation for those rights of way since they aren't used for that purpose. We do, as we have in this case, prepare an action that does retain important public easements for utilities that exist, however.
Counsel Lehman?
I suppose my last thought would be, what's the rationale for the request?
I apologize for the delay, members of the council. I'm told that for Pamela Sherman, we need to be at the podium. A little background, RAR Malting has been working for, I believe, about seven years to identify the specific individual properties within their area of operation as RAR Malting and determine which of those still have a public purpose, which don't, and which would be desirable to vacate to, if you will, rationalize their operations for the future. As you note from the report, if this vacation is granted, they will go about preparing a plat or registered land survey as a next step in the case, in the process of trying to do that. So the concern is that there are a number of areas that are currently right-of-way that are not being used as right-of-way, but are rather being used as part of their industrial operations and don't have other public uses other than for the easements that need to be retained for utilities.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this item for the public hearing?
And I'd just note for the record that we were in communication with Jesse Tice, and he was not able to be here this evening. So I'll endeavor to answer any other questions you may have.
All right. Anyone? Counsel Clay?
I'm looking, there's one small section being proposed to be vacated that's on the north side of 169.
Correct.
Alleyway between lots one and two and nine and 10, Block 13, which I guess might be the original Shakopee plat. SPUC has been talking about putting in a, or expanding the substation down there. Are we completely sure that that's not something we might find value in at some time shortly in the future? And is there any other vacated right-of-way along that alleyway?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Is there other vacated right-of-way along the alleyway?
Well, is this the only section? I mean, there's two six...
I've not researched the blocks that are not a part of RAR's operation, if that's the question that you're asking, to know if other sections of the alleyway moving to the east are vacated. Do note that the resolution specifically makes mention of the overhead power line that Shakopee Public Utilities has and the retention of an easement for that purpose at their request in this section.
All right. Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I'm going to follow up on Counselor Clay's question. A couple meetings back, when the 69 road improvement project, we vacated a section down there by, behind the trading post to move their parking to the side. And then I thought we added an alley in behind there or something. I can't remember exactly what we did. We extended something, maybe a sewer line or something.
Mr. Looney may have additional comment. My recollection is that the parking was moved to the side.
Yep.
Because of the relocation of the access for the property, but I don't recall anything related to additional alleyway.
Okay. And I don't recall if it was that block either, so.
Okay.
Just trying to see where it all fits together.
Yep.
Wait for Mr. Looney to answer that question.
Maybe I can ask Mr. Leake a question while we're reading.
All right.
The conditions, there's two or three conditions?
There are two conditions, and they make reference specifically to the communication from Shakopee Public Utilities and from our engineering staff requesting the retention of easements.
This here's got three, so as...
The actual resolution has?
Yep. And so I'm going to see if they're all combined into the resolution because this has three.
What Counsel Lehman is going for is, in Mr. Swentek's memo of July 21st, there are three items on that one, and the resolution has two items in it?
Correct. And the reason it has two items is it is incorporating by reference those three items in the communication from Mr. Swentek. And the same is true with Shakopee Public Utilities. The condition in the resolution incorporates by reference the conditions suggested by SPUC.
All right. Could you ask your question for Mr. Looney again?
Mr. Looney, the question that I had was, on the 69 project on the west end, we moved the parking for the trading post around to the, to the side, and I think we vacated something behind there.
Right.
But I'm not sure where it fits on this map.
Oh, I think I know what you're referring to. This Clay Street, we actually did a, we acquired some more property from the county. They purchased property in this area. And so Clay Street actually got moved over north of First Avenue, which would not affect this application at all.
And to your recollection, that did result in a vacation of a part of the existing street because of the addition of right-of-way that was...
Yep. Okay.
Any other questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Public hearing closed?
Yep. Close of public hearing. Sorry.
I'll move to close of public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel Lehman, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Think she's stuck again. It's sad, it's kind of hard to tell.
We're going to blame John.
All right. We'll go with it. Counsel Lehman?
Operator, Resolution 7223 approving a vacation of public right-of-way adjacent to RAR Malting Company, for its adoption as presented in our discussions tonight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. And do we just call that 4-0?
Five.
Five?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't know if Counselor Sherman can hear us, but if she can, maybe she should just give thumbs up or thumbs down when you vote.
Well, I think she's stuck. That's the problem.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay. The screen was, okay. I thought she just couldn't.
I can hear you. It's just a matter of...
Can she hear us? Ah. Say anything, Counsel Sherman?
I have to get unmuted by John when I need to talk, so that's why there's a little bit of a delay.
All right. And you voted yes?
Yes.
Okay. Passed unanimously.
While I am muted, I have a question.
Oh, yeah. Question? Very good.
Was 4D be removed from the consent agenda?
43 and 44 are removed from the consent agenda, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So since we don't have video, how are we going to work this? Okay. All right. Perfect. All right. Now we move to items removed from consent agenda. And just so everybody in the audience knows, we are, Counsel Sherman is unable, I don't know if you guys went through this before I got here, but Counsel Sherman is unable to be at the meeting this evening, and so she's Skyped into the meeting, so that's what you can see, stuck up there. But we tried this once before and it worked, and we're refining our process, just so everybody knows what we're trying to do here. And we're very glad to have her in the meeting, so that's great. All right. Item number seven, business removed from consent agenda, 4D3, we're going to begin with. Mr. Looney?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. This item was discussed at our August 6, 2012 Traffic Safety Review Committee. Committee is made up by myself, Mark McNeil, Chris Dalewall, Police Captain, and Mike Hollander, Public Works Superintendent. And one of the items that we discussed about was the school speed zone signing. We've had that issue on our agenda for a couple of meetings. And it kind of surfaced last year, if I go back on August of last year, we authorized the school speed zone for 10th Avenue. And at the time, the county is also authorizing a speed zone on County Road 15 by Sweeney School and by Jackson Elementary. The county uses when children are present as their signage for school speed zone. The county uses when children are present as their signage for school speed zone, consistent with state statute, which is the language used there, and so we have all these school speed zones on county highways, that's what they're using. At that time, we recommended City Council that we should go to that standard for Sweeney Elementary on 10th Avenue, and we did. Then we looked at, as these other issues was coming up, to get rid of some confusion, because we have some that are specific times, some that are when children are present, we looked at that as a committee, and recommendation to you is that we should be consistent with the signage throughout the city. We have three other locations, they are on 10th Avenue, the old senior high, or the west junior high now, and along Shakopee Avenue by Pearson School, which is now sixth grade, or will be a sixth grade, and then Independence Drive, which is along Sacks Elementary. So, with that, then also is attached to the memo from Police Chief Jeff Tate on the rationale for using that signage for enforcement reasons, for consistency, and to be consistent with state statute. I believe that gives you enough information, I can just show you on a map, these are the locations that it affects. The proposal that we have, that I mentioned, the West Middle School on 10th, Pearson on Shakopee Avenue, and Independence Drive by Sacks. Without take any questions.
Councilor Lehman?
Actually, I've got a host of questions. I'm not sure who to direct them at, but does, would this apply on a Saturday or Sunday or a holiday?
Before we go there, let's just have Chief Tate talk about these.
Chief Tate can probably answer that.
Just give us the overview, Chief.
According to state statute, school speed limits shall be in effect when children are present, going to or leaving school during opening or closing hours, or during school recess periods. So, weekends, holidays, no.
And do we have a copy of that state statute in here?
I'm not sure if it was included in the package.
I'd like to get a copy of that, if I could.
You are good.
At your service. Little extra in here.
Okay. Now, my next question is, since most of the schools have the joint relationship with the city, well, all of them do, and there's a lot of after-hour activity, whether it's Little League ball, a lot of church outfits use our schools and stuff, would it make better sense to have 20 around the schools just permanently? So, there's no confusion as to what does "when children are present" really mean?
Councilor Lehman, I don't disagree that that would alleviate a lot of confusion. I think it might conflict from an enforcement standpoint with how the state statute is written, so that solution, and a lot of the solutions or ideas I've heard, I think, in my opinion, lie legislatively in changing the statute. We did, in the course of going through this, Captain Delwall did spend some time with our prosecuting attorneys, they prefer the "when children are present" language on the signs. This is something that, also, as we've looked at this, we're actually, quite frankly, in the minority compared to most school districts. Most places that I've seen, whether it's Jordan, Prior Lake Savage Schools, Eden Prairie, Dyna, I know I had a two-hour drive up north, and every single sign now I, town I drive through, I'm looking for that sign, since this surfaced, they all said "when children are present." And those communities aren't having these massive issues in terms of interpretation. It does boil down to a reasonableness standard, that the officers must prove beyond a reasonable doubt that all the elements of this statute are met, and I do have faith that our officers will enforce this reasonably. That is not a 22-year-old crossing the road on his way to get a letter of recommendation from a school counselor that's not enforcing this when kids are 200 yards away from the school playing on a playground. The intent of the statute, I think, is something our officers understand, and quite frankly, we don't have a lot of problems. I think the real issue here is just consistency throughout the city for the time being, but I don't disagree that, from a clarity standpoint, yes, it just, it'd be much easier.
One more, Mayor?
Yes.
No, I, obviously, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I wish to be, but Section B of the state statute specifically requires indicating the beginning and end of the reduced speed zone time. So, are we not in compliance with that?
I think we had one issue on 17th Avenue that was addressed with the county, if I remember correctly, in terms of the beginning and the end weren't signed properly, and that's been rectified, I believe.
The signage is correct, though.
Okay, so they're, they're talking about distance, not time of day?
Timeframe, yes. And the, the common thing I heard in terms of time was, schools change their opening times quite frequently, and then what do you do to the driver that, when it's 8:30 in the morning and all the kids are in school, should they really drop down to 20 miles an hour on 17th Avenue when there isn't anybody around? Is that really the intent of the statute?
My first...
And children need to be present as well.
Mayor, my fir, my first take on it, when I'm driving by one of these signs is, if I see a children, I'm supposed to slow down.
And I, I think most people do that, especially during, just naturally, during the opening, start and end of the school day and recess, when there are kids close to that roadway, what we've found throughout the years is people normally do slow down, and that's why we don't see a whole lot of issues in school zones. I can tell you, last year, or in 2012, we didn't have a ticket.
But we don't have a, the average driver doesn't know that this doesn't include mom in the stroller, or kid running a dog, or whatever, down the sidewalk.
There again, I think it, from an enforcement standpoint, it comes down to our officers being reasonable, and in terms of interpretation, the size of the sign, if you were gonna print every scenario and exactly when that would take place, it would be an enormous sign that nobody could drive by and probably read. Again, I, I understand your concern that, and yes, it would be more consistent if you could just have that, but it would make enforcement nearly impossible unless a child is present.
My last question, Mayor, if you will. The subsection A says the city basically can establish a school speed zone by a engineering and traffic study. So, does that mean if we did the study, we could make it 20 permanently, if that's what the study pulls out?
I have to refer to Bruce for that one.
No, I think what you just referred to is, the city has a right to establish a school speed zone based on a traffic engineering study. There are specific requirements, how far you can lower the speed limit, based on what the speed limit is already. So, you can, like the ones we have now, for 30 mile an hour, you can go down to 20. But to leave that permanently, you cannot do that. State law prohibits any local street being less than 30 unless you have a school speed zone as defined in the statute. The statute is, you can lower it to 20 miles an hour when children are present, going to and from school, and at recess, just like Chief Tate said. You do not have the right to go to 20 miles an hour permanently.
All right, any other questions from council? Mr. Luce?
Now, we know, we all know that the legislators don't do everything right, and by this statute, we can see that. It's totally absurd. I mean, I've asked 50-some people to explain this signage to me, not a one can. Two were former law enforcement. One of them, who was former law enforcement, said it leaves too much to the discretion of the officer, which I believe it does. Chief Tate has to put the best face on for our department. He tells us that, you know, there's not gonna be anybody misusing the statute. I'll take him at his word, but it could happen, and I don't think that should happen. There should be a better way to come up with a sign that tells people what's going on, and I believe that city staff could come up with something that would explain better to people, or at bare minimum, we need to put a definition out to the public of what this means. Leaving it the way it is, like I said, I talked to over 50 people, and nobody can tell me what it means, so, and I've talked to a couple of your council people, and you feel the same way. So, I'd like to see something done, I hope you can come up with something favorable.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Council Whiting?
I did have the chance to drive down Marshall Road Day and drive by East Junior High, and there's signage now that says, uh, speed limit between certain amount of time, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, I think, I'm not sure of the times, but by the time you're driving, you're at 40 miles an hour, you're looking at the, the sign, you check your watch, you look at your speedometer, you, by then, you're already speeding through. So, I think it makes pretty common sense that when children are present, you slow down. It's straightforward, it's simple, I trust our officers to make the right decision. I think, I think we try and keep it up for the same verbiage as the state law says, consistent state law, so it's defensible in court, should be pretty straightforward.
Anyone else? Councilor Lehman?
Since the legislative process has already begun to possibly change this, if, if the legislative law changes, are we open to be able to, if allowed by state legislation, to go ahead and sign it 20? What I'm trying to get at is, is when we have Little League ballgames going on, and all these things going on in all these schools, this doesn't apply to that. It applies to the school day function. And to try to make, like Chief Tate said, 18 signs to explain everything, you're gonna crash reading all the signs. So, if that happens, I'd like this council to be open to consider that change in the future, if we're allowed to.
But I don't wanna have to go 20 miles an hour at 10 o'clock at night. Why, why would we take a four-lane road that's built for speed and getting people from A to B, and take that down to 20 miles an hour for...
I don't like to go 30 on 4th Avenue out to Shenandoah anytime. I'd prefer to go 45 or 50, matter of fact, many times I do, but, you know, it is what it is.
Anybody hear that? Yeah. All right, uh, anything from Council Sherman? John?
She dropped off, and she's trying to reconnect.
Okay. All right.
I don't know.
Council Whiting?
Approve.
Did I hear her?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Council Sherman?
Um, with this issue, I guess, I mean, any way that we can get clarity is obviously preferred, but in staying in line with the state statute recommendations at any time, all seems to be prudent, and if that changes, then the adjustments, when that happens.
I think you're driving through a tunnel.
That is all.
Uh, that was, I'm sorry, council, we were not able to hear much of that.
All right, sorry. Just go ahead and...
There you go. We can hear you now. Council Sherman, we have your volume bumped up, so...
Okay, am I breaking up at all?
No, you're good now.
Okay, um, if I comment that, at this point in time, it would be, it would make the most sense to follow the state statute as it is stated, and adhere to that in terms of what the guidance is on the signage, and if that state statute changes, then we make adjustments to that point in time.
All right. Would you like to entertain a motion? Be a Skype? Can you hear that? All right. Motion.
I'll make a motion approving the school speed zone signage change for all school speed zones in Shakopee to "when children are present."
Do we have a second?
Second.
Saying by Council Clay. Any discussion? Council Lehman?
I'd like to bring up a follow-up motion.
We'll be on this one.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passed as four to one. Council Lehman?
I'd like to direct staff to put together some kind of a public educational piece for maybe the website or whatever, to get the information out of exactly what this means, so that it's not misinterpreted according to what the chief is telling us, so that people have a understanding of when this actually applies.
Chief, can you give us, what is the intent?
That's not, that's not true.
Chief, can you let us know what your public PR work is gonna be on this to get the word out?
Sure, we'll, we'll put something in, in an activity report that kinda outlines what, what we'll be, what we're going, and we've got a frequently asked question section on our website, we can put that on there as well. There's a lot of different avenues that we can put that information on.
All right, thank you, sir. Council Lehman?
Just to make the point is, the two council members on my right here just said "when children are present," and that's not necessarily the intent of the legislative directive or what you just said. It's not just "when children are present," it doesn't cover the child walking down the sidewalk, it's, it's for the school function, going to school, leaving school, recess.
I think if the officers see someone driving...
30.
30, or in an erratic position, when someone's in danger, I think they have the right to enforce whatever they feel, see fit.
School zone, just the title alone, I think implies that this is, and the statute, during those specific times for school. There's, there's other statutes, if you see somebody driving too fast for road conditions or recklessly putting anyone in the public, whether it's a child or anybody walking, there's other, as long as they're not on 4th Avenue, running speed traps for council members.
Does the 20 mile an hour apply at 8 o'clock at night?
I'm sorry?
Will a 20 mile an hour apply at 8 o'clock at night?
I, I, I'm not understanding your question completely here. You're talking about the 20, if you had a blanket 20 hour?
Not what we're currently doing. Does that 20 mile an hour speed zone?
No, school speed zone, no.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number 4D4. Correct? Is that right?
We had a motion from the council.
Oh, was that an actual motion? I'm sorry.
Yes, it was.
Oh, we didn't get a second, nor did we enter discussion. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were making a formal motion, I thought you were just directing staff.
Well, directing staff, but if what's the direction, do we have consensus to do that?
We'll do some PR work if that's consensus of the council.
Yeah, that's intended anyway.
All right, thank you.
Are you, is that...
Yep.
Okay. Apologize for that, that was my fault.
So, the public is aware of exactly how it's supposed to work.
All right, 44, Mr. Looney?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for putting this on the table. Because of the good bids that we got for doing the County Road 18 connecting trail, which would connect this neighborhood and the 18 Trail up to 16, we had an existing trail that really is a maintenance access for maintaining our sanitary sewer line that goes in this area, sanitary sewers in there. We have an opportunity to raise that trail up about two feet and move it over. We did a rough calculation, I mean, we're asking for not to exceed 20,000, we think we'll be under that, and we could pay that out of our sanitary sewer fund, because it is used now for the maintenance of sanitary sewer lines. So, that's what we're asking for, and using the initial estimate that we had for the initial trail on 18 was around 80,000 to 90,000, came in at 55, so we feel we have some extra funds, it would be paid out of the sanitary sewer, we would need it. The trail that has been underwater is now not underwater, but it is broken up, so we need to raise it up and beef it up in order to maintain a sewer line, so, and we have the contractor agreeable to maintain... So, and we have the contractor agreeable to maintain his bid prices for this work. So that's what I'm asking for.
Council Lehman?
Mayor, I took it out of consent only because I didn't have a chance to read it, um, it was on the table. And, uh, now that Bruce explained it, it makes sense. It hasn't moved or anything, it's actually an improvement, it came in under budget, good thing for that. So, uh, I'll make the motion to approve staff, authorize staff to approve the change order not to exceed the twenty thousand from Valley Paving for the additional trail improvement next to the wetlands on the west side of eighteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Wyding. Um, one question, so will the, um, water control, control structure still need to be built at some point in the future? Or is this, that still needs to be done? Okay.
Yep, and that's in the works of being designed right now.
All right, beautiful, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, entertainer recess for Economic Development Authority meeting?
So, move.
Council Wyding, seconded by Council Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. President Clay?
We'll open this August twenty-first, two thousand twelve, meeting of the Economic Development Authority, call it of order. Madam Recording Secretary, if you would please make note of the role...
Yes, Mr. President.
To approval of the agenda. Mr. Wyding?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded by Council Lehman. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved. Next item would be approval of the minutes for the July seventeenth, two thousand twelve meeting, Mr. Wyding.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July seventeenth, two thousand twelve meeting.
Motion is made to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Lehman. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? July seventeenth minutes are approved. Next item would be bills payment in the amount of one thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and forty-three cents. Is there anything unusual in this that needs discussion? Mr. Lehman?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of, I don't know, six hundred bucks, how's that?
Okay.
Give us a discount over there, Jim, or... All right, uh,
Didn't look like this.
Eleven hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion is made to approve the bill, seconded by Mr. Tabkey. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Name of bills is approved. Item number five would be improvement loan grant program discussion. It also relates to the city council packet, item number ten, C dash four. Mr. Leake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you noted, this is a requested action by both the EDA this evening and the city council. For the past few months, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, um, has been working on a proposal to reinstitute an improvement program, whether it was loan or grant, uh, they discussed that early on. Uh, what you have in front of you is the result of their activity and their discussions. It is a recommendation to reinstate a facade improvement program in the city of Shakopee. And if I could turn to the third page of your report, I'll just highlight the specific, um, features of their recommendation. Again, they've recommended to you that this program be made available in all of the commercial zoning districts within the city of Shakopee, not just as it was in the past in either the downtown or the downtown and First Avenue corridor. Uh, they have recommended that it be a forgivable loan as in the past. Um, what that means is that the money is provided. There is no repayment during the term of the loan unless the property owner vacates the business or, um, divest themselves of the business, in which case they have to pay back a pro-rata share of whatever the loan is. The Economic Development Authority is recommending that for the balance of this year, the eighty thousand dollar EDA levy be made available for this program. Um, and to get maximum use of it, they have suggested that the maximum loan amount be reduced. It was previously twenty-five thousand dollars and they've suggested a cap of fifteen thousand dollars. They've also suggested that the applicant provide a sixty rather than fifty percent match to any loan granted. As I said, the loans would be available to improvements, um, to building facades. Uh, that would be inclusive of facades viewable from a variety of streets and public alleyways. That's similar to what was the case in the previous program. You have in your packet, uh, proposed revised application criteria for evaluation and a matrix, um, that talks about those criteria and how they would be scored. They've recommended that to you. As I noted in the overview to the budget for the EDA with you, they have recommended to you that for two thousand thirteen, you increase the levy for this program alone to a hundred and fifty thousand to allow, uh, more loans to be made. What they suggest as a process is that there be a committee that reviews the applications when they come in. That would consist of a representative of the EDAC, a representative of the chamber, if it's in the downtown or historic areas, a representative of the HPAC and staff, which would forward its recommendation on to the Economic Development Authority as in the past. So that in sum is the recommendation of the EDAC to reinstitute an improvement loan program for facades. If you do later in the agenda, approve, uh, the program, staff will begin putting together a list of properties that might be eligible. As we have in the past, we'll provide individual notification of the institution of the program as well as, uh, using the website and other media for that purpose. So with that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for staff, I'll start with Mr. Wyding.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman. In the past, I, I don't think it was in the distant past, but I think last year's or the, I guess it would be the year before's rendition, interior renovations were included. And that's been taken out of this proposal.
The EDAC did discuss that issue, whether it should be a broader improvement program as it was most recently and came to the conclusion that their view was that, um, the improvement of building facades was critical to what this kind of program was intended to do. They did have some discussion about perhaps looking in the future at a different program that was aimed at interior improvements or structural improvements, um, if we can identify some resources for that. The secondary intent on their part was that with investment in more commercial areas, it may provide a spur to other businesses that might be looking at improvement of their building facades.
Okay, continue, Mr. Chair. Just a couple, uh, points I wanna, uh, ask about. Uh, there's a page on here, page five of the Data Practices Act. I'm not sure if this is part of the application. Uh, there's a, four references that I found to downtown facades and I just thought that probably should be removed as far as...
We'll take another look before it's circulated and remove those.
And then on the evaluation matrix, uh, for the facade improvement, um, my concern is, uh, that in the past, this has been utilized for historic preservation and I'm, I'm glad to see that, uh, that's still gonna be a portion of it when, when appropriate. But I'd like to see some more weighting on the evaluation to historic preservation aspects of that. Maybe, uh, extra point in, uh, for, if a building is over fifty years old, maybe two points for fifty to a hundred. If it's, uh, locally designated historic already, I'd like to maybe see the three-point value. And if it's actually historic preservation work, I think that should be weighted a little heavier too. Maybe the four points. That's a suggestion I might add.
Mr. Lehman?
Mr. Leake, the last time we discussed this, we, uh, I brought up the concern I had about individual properties using it multiple times. Thus taking money away from other potential uses. And I don't see that addressed in here?
Um, Councilor Lehman, uh, members of the board, it is not addressed in here. The EDAC did have that discussion. Um, and I provided them examples from a number of other programs in the metropolitan area and I think one or two outside the metro area. Um, most of those programs didn't have any limitation per se. Um, one of them that I recall had a limitation of only one per calendar or fiscal year, as I recall. And at the conclusion of their discussion, um, they were, I would say, not concerned about the amount of use by the same property owners over the course of the period, um, in the past. And I think they tried to address that by in part reducing the amount of the loan that's available so that there's not a real strong impetus to get twenty-five thousand dollars for projects in successive years.
Okay, and then the, uh, using a designated property as criteria, my feeling is since we don't have a program per se, I don't know how you would link the two together when we don't, we don't actually have a program that exists currently today.
I'm sorry, where are you referencing specifically?
Counselor Wyding made the comment that the criteria be based on historic designation.
It's a response to the suggestion.
We don't have a historic designation program.
We do have locally designated historic properties.
We don't have a policy to actually do that.
We've approved those.
We have a list of the properties.
They're listed.
And I believe Mr. Lehman was talking about having a policy as to how to deal specifically with those properties on that list. Uh, as something separate from the, the rest of the program?
Yep.
We don't, but in this, I'm asking that we do.
Sure, let's ponder that for a second and go to Mr. Tabkey.
No, I think this is a very well-thought-out program and will be well utilized by businesses in Shakopee to help improve the look and feel of our town. I think this is a, a great use of city funds.
Looks like Mr. Sherman's back with us. Could you ask her if she has any questions or comments?
We have to use that mic. The podium's...
Um, if you can hear me first. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I, I have an experience with Mayor. I think that this is a great program and I think that we should have it implemented, um. So I don't, I don't have any issues with that. I think, I think it's a very good program to help revive the look of downtown for business owners that want to take advantage of it.
Do you see it most beneficial to downtown historic part of the business area in downtown Shakopee or for the entire city's commercial areas?
Well, the intent, the original intent, I believe, was the downtown area, correct? Mr. Leake?
The original intent of this program, when it was established before I got here and for a number of years was in the downtown. At one point, the previous city council expanded it to include First Avenue and actually a part of Riverside Road. Later on, it was reduced to the downtown and First Avenue district. The EDAC felt that it was more beneficial for the long term to make it available to properties that are commercially zoned throughout the city because those buildings too have lifespans, um, and potential improvement needs, if not today, perhaps in the future. So referring to a previous program, properties on Marshall Road might benefit and that's why they talked about getting information as part of the application, not only about when the building was built, but also when the last facade renovation work was done to evaluate if it was really warranted based on the passage of time and, um, some potential improvement to the facade.
Still have a little panel if you'd like.
Mr. Leake cut out a bit for me, but, I mean, it seems like that the application process is really the critical piece in getting the application and then being able to assess, um, to look, to look at it and granted there are subjective components of it, um, but making the determination of, if it would, uh, be a benefit. Oh, I mean, with an application process, it's not a given that you're gonna prove everything correct, so application process in itself is really the, the critical piece of it, to make sure that you have either approve or not.
If I understood the comments, certainly true, it is not the case that an application is made that would automatically be granted a loan. That matrix basically says you have to meet a minimum number of points to even be considered and let's say hypothetically, we get ten applications. We're gonna fund all of those and some of them score higher, so those that score highest are going to be addressed first, if that's the case.
Mr. White? Uh, please let me clarify my thoughts, Council Lehman. My, my thoughts were on the facade improvement evaluation matrix. Uh, that if the points, the total points be maybe twenty or whatever it would be, twenty and the valuation for historic properties be given a little more weight in the matrix. So, uh, because it costs so much, because it adds so much to the economic, uh, the, the economic process of rebuilding a historic site. Adds value to our sense of place and our historic value. So I just wanna see that that be addressed in the matrix of approving these loans. I, I think the program is well thought out. It's a good plan, it includes everybody. I just also wanna see that historic aspect as part of the evaluation process.
And, and, you know, I, I understand what you're trying to do, however, that's, that's basically an opinion. You know, one person's opinion is historic properties are great and another person's opinion might be, I wanna tear mine down and build something new. It's easier to maintain, lasts me longer, so on and so forth, so that's kind of, kind of an opinion.
But this is a facade improvement program.
Right, if they wanna change the facade and make it like George Jetson building over here or something.
Sure, that wouldn't be weighted with the same weight then.
So, I, I, you know, I'm not really favor discriminating against because of what property they have. I'm looking at it from how are they gonna improve it? I don't, if it's an old property that needs to be improved or if it's not a historic property that needs to be improved. Bottom line is, if they, if they both need improvements, it's both a benefit. Regardless of which one gets approved. In my mind.
Might I suggest that one possible... Wait a minute, this would be to first, uh, initially focus on whether or not to reinstate it and if, you know, if we do reinstate it, then we can always go back and tweak that matrix pointing system. Would you give us some time for, uh, more time for a little more detailed research and discussion on that? Tabkey?
Make a motion recommend a city council reinstatement of the city's facade improvement program as recommended by the EDAC.
Motion by Commissioner Tabkey, seconded by Mr. Lehman. Discussion? Hamilton, a discussion?
I'm good, thank you.
Any other?
At that point of review, at the end of this first small portion of the year, add that in for discussion for EDAC.
Why don't we offer that as a separate motion?
All right.
Yeah. During any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now, you want to make a motion directing staff to discuss this idea more with the, uh, EDAC? Or...
I would. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, direct staff to discuss the historic preservation aspects to the evaluation matrix and bring it back to council after this, uh, first, uh, few months of trial period. Say, uh, next year, January.
Second?
Second, Mr. Tabkey's discussion, Mr. Lehman.
Would it make more sense to see where we go with our historic preservation policy first?
Not under the facade program, I don't think so.
Yes. Clarification of the intended motion. Uh, assuming that the city council then approves it, you would be saying for the facade improvement program to be initiated or to be started immediately, but bring it back first of January with the added discussion for historic waiting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion second. All those favorites say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
We have Mr. Williams dissenting. Motion carries four to one. Anything else before tonight's meeting?
Nothing from staff.
Staff, I have a motion to adjourn to September 18th at 12:00. Motion to adjourn to September 18th at 7:00 PM, seconded by Mr. White. All those favorites say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, President Clay. Moving on, we are reconvening. Moving on to item 10C1, review of the conditional use permit and mineral extraction and land rehabilitation permit for Shakopee gravel.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, or as you know from the report, this CUP for mineral extraction, gravel extraction, is reviewed annually by the Board of Adjustment Appeals and the City Council. That has occurred at the Board of Adjustment, and they have recommended to you by what was that night, a unanimous vote of four to zero, that you accept this year's report. In case you are not aware, what occurs each year when the applicant makes a request for the report to be received and accepted, our staff, specifically Mark Noble, who's been the project manager, reviews the site extensively, as the planning commission knows, because they saw, I think, 50 photographs of the site that he took this year in connection with the conditions. Part of your report is that text which includes the existing conditions of the CUP and our determination, which was recommended to you by the Board of Adjustment, of whether or not the conditions are being met. I think the report notes for you that there are a couple of issues that we have initiated discussion on and which we intend to come back to you and to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals about. One of them is the duration of time for mining activity to make use of all of the aggregate resource on the site. The conditional use permit, which grew out of litigation, has a specific drop dead date, and as the council has heard every year, the, the rate at which that material is being used changes from year to year based on the amount of construction activity. And so the intent is that we would come back to you after our, our work and discussions with the applicant and their representatives with some suggestions for a, an amended CUP that addresses that, and also conditions that no longer are relevant to the site that we still make comment on with each annual review. I don't know if you noted it in your activity report, but in the most recent activity report, you'll, will have seen the quarterly report on, on groundwater. That's something that's been done for a number of years, and there were no indications of substances of concern, especially diesel range organics, which were not detected. So we do have representatives of the applicant here, but the recommendation from the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and staff to you is to accept the report for this year. Note that we will be coming back later in the year. Right now we are thinking that we will be back in front of the Board of Adjustments in November on the issues that I briefly outlined.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
Yeah.
Discussion? Counselor Clay?
Just out of curiosity, when it comes time to discuss and possibly negotiate a change to the end of operations date, can a condition of that be subject to a limitation on who the finished redeveloped property could be sold to?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a condition on who at the, at the end of the mining, who it could be sold to?
Once the mining is done and the land is reclaimed according to their reclamation plan, that they could then sell it to any developer or other entity, say of one?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I don't think the city has the authority to put a restriction on what private property can be sold.
Do they have the ability to place the restriction on themselves as part of an agreement for an extension of their mining operations?
As a matter of agreement, yes.
Okay. I might never guess where I'm going with this.
But with that, they could sell it to somebody else who could therefore sell it to whoever they want to.
Now we'd make it into perpetuity for as well.
Ah, there's the kicker.
To allay your concerns, I don't have nearly enough money to acquire this site.
Yeah, we thought you'd like that.
Ah, well, so you say.
All right. Do we have any, Counselor Lehman?
Well, Mr. Lee, as you know, I've sat through this process for probably 11 years now. I see, I see Mr. Perry, my friend in the audience, nice to see you again. I noticed that we didn't have any noticeable complaints.
That's correct. And I should note, because some of you will probably have thought about it as a staff, not I personally, but Mr. Noble has had direct contact with Beverly Canon, who's been concerned about this issue in the past. She unfortunately could not join us this evening. She may send a follow-up communication. Our understanding is the only concern that she's had, although it hasn't been the subject of a complaint, is the ongoing one of trying to manage dust, especially from the traffic on 83. And the applicant and the representatives, we think, have made good efforts to do that. It is a difficult thing to do with ongoing operations, especially in that part of the city, depending on weather conditions.
I, I just say for the record that in the past, we had some minor issues with some, you know, mowings and dust and whatever, and it's nice that we don't have any complaints or a list of complaints. I'd like to thank the folks out there for taking care of it.
We, I think, had a good working relationship over the last several years, so we appreciate that.
Well done. Good. All right. Entertained a motion? Counselor Clay?
Motion's moved to accept the review of this permit as a condition in approval in the improved resolution number 6533, with approval and adoption.
Seconded by Counselor Lehman?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. I heard you that time, Pam.
Very good.
We're getting this figured out. Item number 10C2, request to rezone property from Business Park to Highway Business. Go up, go up to the microphone, will you please?
Why don't we have a talk afterwards? Okay. Can you just call me?
Sure.
Let us call me.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council. As you noted, this is a request to rezone property from Business Park, BP to B1 Highway Business. And just for those who may be watching, place the property, it's approximately 11 acres located on the north side of Prunk Highway 169. To the north of it is 12th Avenue and County Road 83 is to the west of this site. It's immediately adjacent to the two furniture stores to the west. The site has already been the subject of a request for preliminary and final plat approval, and earlier on the consent agenda, you approved that plat request. It has also been the subject of a conditional use permit request for a hotel, and that CUP, conditional use permit, was approved for a lot of the three in the center of the property that was created by that plat. At the time, the CUP was approved, the plat was not approved, and so it was actually granted to the underlying parcel, but there were conditions regarding what would happen with the approval of the plat. There's actually been discussion of the request at two of our boards and commissions. Back in May, the EDAC chair brought this item to that group to discuss, and as I reported to the planning commission last week, I think the consensus of that group was that they saw merit in the rezoning to B1 from BP. There was also some discussion on their part last meeting, which was held last week, in which they essentially reiterated it, although they did not make a specific recommendation, and per state statute in our city code, that is not a part of the rezoning process that we go through. As noted in your report, the planning commission did review it, did discuss it, and recommended to you that you not rezone the property to Business Park. And so the recommendation in front of you this evening is to offer and pass a resolution denying the request, resolution number 7224, to rezone the property from Business Park to Highway Business. If after your discussion, that's not your desired action, I would note for you that you would need to direct us to prepare an alternative resolution for approval of the request. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counselor Lehman?
Couple of questions, Mayor. The properties around this site are currently zoned.
See if I can zoom in a little bit. This map was prepared for a different purpose, but the furniture stores here are zoned B1 Highway Business. This property is zoned Business Park and is the subject of the request. The properties to the north are zoned industrial, and there is additional property that is zoned Business Park as well. Of course, on the other side of 169, we have the Business Park portion of Dean Lake's, commercial portion on 83, and some residential as well. Basically, this area is Valley Green Business Park, and the Kmart distribution center is within that area as well.
The second question, Mayor, is it, is, is a hotel use allowed in the Business Park?
That's something we discussed extensively at the planning commission last week, and a, a hotel is allowed by conditional use permit under Business Park. Another retail use which is permitted by conditional use permit is a restaurant. Retail per se, as in retail stores, unless they are only 10% of the floor area of a building, are not allowed. So if you were to have a use that was primarily industrial warehousing as allowed by that zone, you could have some retail as a part of it. But the hotel is permitted by CUP. It has a CUP. We actually have the building permit application in for review on the hotel. Restaurants would be permitted, other retail would not.
Yes, sir. I guess that begs to ask why the request to rezone it if the proposed use is allowed in that current zoning?
Well, the applicant is here, their representatives are here, and they can certainly address that better than I, but I'll take a stab at it, and I think their view is that there may be some potential for multi-tenant space for a variety of retailers on that site. There may be other users they have in mind. To the best of my knowledge, as we discussed it back in May at the EDAC, and last week at the planning commission, or the week before last, excuse me, they do not have other specific users that they've shared with us, but they can certainly answer the question too.
Any questions for Mr. Lee before we hear from the applicants? All right, gentlemen. You're even signing in first, thank you.
I am. I learned that last time I didn't. Mr. Mayor and council members, we appreciate the opportunity to at least visit with you and for your consideration of the requests that we have made.
Could you, since you, after you wrote it down, could you let us know your name and stuff, please?
I will. My name is Jim Heintz. I am the CEO of the Ashley Furniture Home Stores and the Furniture Mart Stores. We are a retail furniture operation. We actually have 18 furniture stores, retail stores in the state of Minnesota, and we are represented in North Dakota, South Dakota, and Iowa. So we're in the, we're in the retail furniture business, and that's why we're here tonight. We want to talk about retail and the use of the land. One of the questions that Mr. Lehman had was if we can put a hotel, what do we want to do? There actually are 11 acres there. I think the hotel is going to use a third of that or somewhere in that amount of space. So there's probably somewhere in the six to seven acre area that certainly at this point is, is not been designated for anything, you know, at this time. I want to just give you a little bit of background on, on us and a little bit of history of this particular piece of ground, and, and then I do have Mr. Bill Hinks here, who is the actual owner of the property, and he'll answer some questions further. We purchased the land in 2003. We started the two furniture stores there in 2004. We employ 47 people in that location. We paid somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.25 million in wages last year to the employees at that particular location. I know our taxes on that location are a little over $340,000 a year. They're about $50,000 a year on the piece of ground that we, that we are requesting to be rezoned. So it, it's been a tremendous financial investment. And obviously, when the property was purchased and the store was built in 2004, we were in a different economy than we are in today. And I know the question came up a week ago, why do you want to do this? And I think our answer is really right there. What, what, what happened in 2004 has significantly changed. And quite frankly, we've had this property listed since 2004 for sale. Obviously, at this point in time, we have had no interest in that. I mentioned to the planning and zoning. We were so desperate that when Slumber Land was looking for a spot in Shakopee, had we been able to rezone, we would have sold them some land and be right next door to us. And what our, what our thoughts really are, is that this, this is a great piece of ground. We've spent a lot of time looking around the city of Shakopee. I have pictures here, and I don't want to, you know, bore you with, with some of them. These are pictures of, of present warehouse that is for lease in, in the community within a mile of our facility. I'm not sure, there's probably close to a million square foot of warehouse space available. There really is, is not a need, and I think most things happen because there's a need for something. There is a need for more retail space in what we consider to be a triple A location. It's been a challenge. I'm, I'm not going to lie to you. The, the challenges of the economy, the challenges of all of the home housing industry have certainly been a big part of our, our lives here in the last four or five years. We've weathered the storm. The store here is, is starting to see an influx, but we're still not driving the kind of traffic into that area that we would like. And so for us to tell you exactly, you know, I'd love to be able to tell you, here's what we would put in there. We would like to put in there like-minded businesses like us, home value type businesses. We'd love to have a carpet store in there. We'd love to have a, an appliance store in there. And Mr. Hinks will, will share with you a little bit. He's done some research with, with some of the other like-minded businesses here in the Twin City area that, that do have interest in that area. It's very difficult for us to move any further until they, we can tell them, yes, you can do this, or no, you can't do this. And, and so we're really at a, really at a crossroads. We're, we're stymied to go further. If we could have found someone else that would have shown any kind of interest in this particular piece of ground, certainly we would have, we would have worked with them and done something other than what we're requesting to do now. So why we're here tonight is to appeal to the, what this land really is for, we think is, is a great retail location. The, the visibility, obviously, to the highway, still the majority of our advertising dollars go into media, electronic and, and paper, but one of the greatest advertisers we have is Highway 169. We couldn't find anything better for exposure to us than the, the location. So I don't want you to get the idea that we're not happy to be here. We're extremely happy. We, we value our relationship. We value our relationship in, in Minnesota. We've worked hard. Mr. Hinks was just named by the Women's Alliance as the Person of the Year in terms of philanthropy here in the state of Minnesota, and in providing clothing and... of philanthropy here in the state of Minnesota, and in providing clothing and other things than we do. We do a tremendous amount of charitable things that we can get involved in, whether it be in this community or any other community. So, tonight, what we're talking about is that, and that's kind of a little bit of history about the piece of ground. We do believe that it's a reasonable request based upon reasonable thought that what can and should, you know, can this piece of ground be used for the best? And we truly, truthfully, believe that retail of some type is where we need to go. With that, I want to introduce Bill Hinks. He and I have been friends for 40 years, worked together for a number of years, and I have a great deal of confidence in the type of businesses that he puts up. We're very proud of all of our businesses, and we operate very ethically. He is certainly a person that operates his businesses for his employees. It's always the first thing asked, is that a good decision to make for our people? And so, I think you're looking at someone here that certainly will be good for the community going forward. And with that, whoops, there he is.
Mr. Hinks.
Thank you, Jim. And I want to say to everybody, it's always, it's always hard to follow Jim because he's the master. And for years, I followed him when he played football at South Dakota State, and we played softball together for 15 years. So we got to know each other pretty well, and when I had an opportunity, he was an Augie football coach at Augustana for 20 years, and I had to go to all those games just because he was my best friend. So now I got him working with us, and I absolutely love it. He's just a great guy. So, you know, what he said about retail is 100% true. I got to tell you, when I first spotted the spot in Shakopee for store, I'd been driving by it for three years, looking at it, wondering why no one had done something with that corner. And of course, on the way, I was actually born and raised in St. Paul, so I spent a lot of time in the cities, but moved to South Dakota when I was 21. So, but I still come back and forth for Twins, Vikings, Timberwolves, which are sadly always in trouble. But, you know, I looked at that site, and when I decided that it needed those furniture stores on that corner, I really was extremely happy because that is a AAA location. And the reason we're trying to put some home stores next to us, like I have a friend at Warner Stallion, and I have a letter from him, he is very willing to take a look at that. We would love to have him in that site. And I'm telling you, the strip center that we would build there to hold those stores, and there's only six and a half acres there, so we're not talking about a huge area. We're talking about an opportunity to put a really nice little strip center with a bunch of home stores. So if someone's building a house, you know, for the most part, we'll be looking for appliance, carpeting, countertop guys, because there's a lot of those out there. So you have an opportunity to bring that home buyer to that little center there, and he can get the whole thing done in one place, including the furniture shopping. So that's the reason why in Mankato, in Rochester, in a lot of other areas where we have a store, we focused on adding space and tenants besides those stores because it just mushrooms. It grows for us. So I can promise you, if you would grant us the zoning for that property, we would spend the winter trying to find the right participants, and I would build that center and lease back at a very reasonable price to those tenants that are going in there so we can make this thing really work, and it'll be a great-looking center, and we'll do a great job with it. And Jim is right in one thing. You know, I had one person interested in putting a warehouse-type store, and he offered me $2 for it. And the realtor told me, well, there's land for that price all over Shakopee, and I think that's sad. I think it's because we are overbuilt in those certain areas where people are just want to get rid of it. And of course, I don't want to get rid of what I consider an extremely good retail area next to our stores. And we think our stores would do better, and I think we're going to have good people working in there. You know, I don't think, Jim mentioned salaries, but our salespeople make between $30,000 and $75,000 a year. So they're not poor-paying jobs, you know? They have to work hard. They work nights, they work weekends, you know? So they, you know, they earn their money. So, you know, I think that's all I really have to say, but I can only tell you that, you know, if you would grant this zoning, you know, we promise we'd make you proud. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Clay.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a picture of the property, too, that I was going to put under your, because I know the one you had, I don't know whether that's going to be clear or not. But this part here is where the hotel is, and I have a picture of the hotel, which I think is going to be... This way? Okay. I have a picture of the hotel that's going in the middle site, and I know the guy personally that's putting it in, and it's going to be a really nice hotel, and it's going to go in this property itself, it's going to go right here in this property. So the piece of property that will be used for what we're calling the home center is between our furniture store right here, and it'll go right in here between that and the hotel. And he also is very, is very happy with the hotel there, that he's got something, you know, that's going to go on the other side, that hopefully will draw traffic. And then the other piece we still have available is this piece here that I have had a restaurant ask me about just recently, and I guess this piece right here, we've just given to the city. We have been paying taxes on that for eight years, but the city has been maintaining it, you know, and taking care of it. So I guess that's been, has been now turned over to the city. But the pieces that we're talking about are this little two-acre piece here, and then there's about five and a half acres here. So in the grand scheme of things, it isn't a lot of property, but I think it will create good jobs and tax dollars for the city of Shakopee.
And what's on the other side to the east of the, so there's the hotel parcel there, and then there's a drainage pond?
Yes, right.
Okay. Counsel Clay, did you have?
Well, have you read our sign ordinance? Have you read our sign ordinance?
Yes, with the stores there, I know what...
Can you live with it because we're not inclined to change it?
Well, I'm going to go by whatever rule you've got.
I want everybody to remember he said that. I'm the official sign ordinance stickler on the council.
Counsel Lehman.
I'd like to point out that the next item on the agenda is a...
All right, let's stick to the items that are currently on the agenda, please.
You know, if we can, I have one more gentleman here that has done a lot of work on the property that would like to visit with you about some of the other questions that kind of came up about the possible things that could happen because of this little zoning. You know, I don't see a huge amount of traffic, because like the furniture store, if we have a third of our parking lot with cars, we're busy inside. So we don't get the Walmart grocery store-type traffic back there at all, you know? And so, and a lot of times when it, when the road is busy, I'm telling you my own personal observation, when the road is busy with people going to work and doing those things at 8:00, there's no cars in the furniture store. So, you know, and I don't think this will create, wouldn't create a lot more either, because ours is more after people get off of work, sometimes 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon.
Thank you.
So if that's okay, I'll turn you over to Todd here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Todd, if you could go as quickly as you could, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Todd Erickson, and I'm a civil engineer, and I've got a land planning, surveying, and engineering firm in Lake Elmo, and I'm fortunate enough to take along with these guys around the Twin Cities. So it's always a pleasure to follow these guys. You know, one of the real things is that, you know, they're a businessman, it's been around for a long time. They know what's happening, they know what they can market, they know what sells. They're here to tell you that times have changed. There's a reason to rezone this property to the retail, and they can make things happen and start turning some revenue on that property for the city. So it's a real benefit for the city and for them as well. It'll actually enhance their existing business with increased traffic to their business, and as Mr. Hinks had stated, that he's looking at a home store-type, you know, situation where they kind of sell off each other. So, I think it's a good thing for everybody. You know, the traffic issues that Mr. Hinks brought up is exactly what the traffic manuals state. They're, the traffic that you're seeing at the industrial sites are different times than what they're seen at the retail center. So that's very apparent, and it's also been studied to death, too. The, you know, the, I guess the main, you know, you heard from Mr. Leake that the EDAC is for this as well. So I think, you know, with, and there's, and with, one nice thing about these guys, this group of businessmen, is that they're very methodical, and what they're looking for is a way to be able to take this first step with the city, develop this zoning that will work so they can actually go out and market, and not have to spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars with guys like me and the architects up front to be able to have to do that. So they're looking for help from the city at this point to be able to go up and go out and take that first step to start really marketing this property and developing this property for something that will work for the city and work for everybody, so. With that, I can answer any other technical engineering or surveying or any other questions you guys might have in relation to the site, too, so.
Any questions?
Was that fast enough?
Thank you. I like you. Counsel Sherman, you have anything?
Can you hear me?
There you go. Go ahead.
I think she said no questions, but...
You think so, Tom?
We'll go with that.
All right. Very good, then. All right, any other questions from council? For Mr. Leake or the applicants?
For Mr. Leake.
Counsel Clay? Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Just off the top of your head, how many vacant lots do we have in, or acres is maybe a better comparison currently in the Business Park zoning opposed to Highway Business?
I don't remember if the council have an acreage total. We could certainly provide that, but as you know, there is vacant space in the valley, or excuse me, in the Shakopee Town Square Mall. There is vacant acreage adjacent to Riverside Fields Development. Where the QuickTrip is located, there are some additional sites. To the south of South Bridge, there is about six to eight acres that is vacant commercial land. On the north side of Rivers Church Edition at 83 and 16, there was a portion that was intended for commercial as part of that. It's actually zoned. PRD, two of those areas are the only two areas that are zoned that way. Of course, the former Kmart and Rainbow Foods site has been vacant for a number of years as well. So, we have some fairly substantial vacant square footage and acreage within the community for residential. We have two additional sites that are guided for commercial between County Road 16, 17th Avenue, and Eagle Creek Boulevard, just immediately to the west of County Road 83 as well. Don't have a total, but those are the ones that I'm aware of.
From your opinion, how would this, if it were rezoned, how would that affect transportation at that intersection?
I don't expect, members of the council, that the development of the additional seven acres for commercial purposes would negatively affect transportation at this intersection because of the magnitude of the site.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you want to get confirmation on that lot just west of the...
Sure, yeah. The, we, the individual lots that we're speaking, we're discussing rezoning are each of them, one to the west of where the hotel is going to be built, and then also the east of where the hotel is.
Actually, the request, members of the council, is to rezone the entire roughly 11-acre site to B1. And the net effect, if you were not aware of it for the hotel, is it would simply go from a use that's permitted by conditional use permit to a permitted use within that zone. And again, the two alternative actions that I've put before you are approval of a resolution, which you have denying the request, or if your wish is to grant the request to rezoning to direct us to come back with action for you to take at your next meeting.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Leake, if the council were to proceed with directing the rezoning, would it also accompany a comprehensive plan amendment, since this is not...
That's correct, because it's guided for Business Park on the land use plan. So we would send the notices for review for the land use change. What we typically do to the adjacent jurisdictions is a letter that says, if you have no concerns, please check this box, sign the letter, and return it to us. And that usually happens pretty quickly. It would then have to go to the Met Council. I would hope, given the size of this land use change, 11 acres, that they may even waive review of the change, but we'd have to see when it's submitted to them. So the zoning would not, I think the city attorney is getting to, would not take effect immediately because we have to go through that process on the land use.
Thank you. Counsel Lehman.
Mr. Leake, if, is there anything that stops the applicant from dividing this parcel?
Further from the plot that was approved?
Well, I'm thinking, let's say, let's say we leave it Business Park, hotel gets built, a retail use wants to go next door on the west to subdivide that property out and rezone a smaller portion?
If I understand the question, Counselor Lehman, I don't think you want to open a situation where you would rezone a small portion of the site. The rationale for rezoning is largely that there is B1 Highway Business, fairly substantial site for the two furniture stores that's adjacent to it, and if you were to divide out a smaller parcel, you might risk spot zoning for that use.
Am I correct that the current furniture stores were rezoned in the same manner? Is that accurate?
Those properties were rezoned several years ago for commercial development, yes.
Okay. And what was the reason for that happening then? And then have there been any drawbacks to that happening?
I'm not aware of any drawbacks from that happening. We've not had complaints from any of the property owners about the impact on the Business Park of those two uses. The request was really occasioned by Valley Green Business Park several years ago because they saw that section of land, as close as it was to 83 and 169, as being a potential retail location, and it was granted at the time.
Any further questions? All right, discussion, what do we think?
I could go either way. I mean, it's consistent with what's to the left of it, and it's, in its current form, it's consistent to what's to the right.
I'm in the same boat. I see no reason to, not, I mean, we have a hotel on one side and retail on the other side, and I understand that we obviously need jobs and space for jobs into the future. Absolutely focus on that, which is what we're doing on the other side of Dean's Lakes. And I don't, I, not having a background on the history, just driving by, before I was mayor, I was always confused as to why there wasn't other retail things in there, because it always made sense to me that that goes there. So I don't have a problem with this. I think it's consistent with what we've got there.
And this being what?
Rezoning to commercial.
Highway business.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, my concern would, my concern would be if the parcel to the left on our maps was something different than what it currently is, because then you'd be creating a spot zoning situation. That would be my concern, but that's not the case, so.
Right.
I could go either way, actually.
All right. Do we have Counsel Sherman at all? Okay. Counsel Whiting?
I think Mr. Heinitz and Mr. Hanks said was relatively true. With the difference in the economy now, things are changing. My concerns were with the traffic there, but I think Mr. Leek has alluded that it hasn't been an issue. I can see the value in businesses being within the same realm of kind of a one-stop shop for, for the furniture, that maybe carp, whatever kind of different ancillary businesses they put into that area. I can see the value in that, and I can see that that view from 169 would be very attractive to retail.
Counsel Clay?
Yeah, I agree with everybody.
Of course you do.
Yeah.
You're agreeable tonight.
No, it's, I mean, a good argument could be made either, either way. I was just thinking that if we offered a motion directing staff to prepare, would have to be a zoning ordinance change?
It would be both a land use map and zoning map amendment to reguide the property for commercial use and rezone it to be one highway business.
Accompanied by a few public hearings and...
Lots of paperwork.
Lots of paperwork.
We love that statutory paperwork that involves the Metropolitan Council.
Yes. He's beaming already.
And, you know, nothing else. It doesn't mean that, when we do get it, we can't change our mind and say we don't want it anymore and leave the zoning the same too, but at least it gives us a chance to look at that and ponder it a bit longer.
Keep them guessing.
Yeah, well, I hate to keep everybody guessing.
All right, do we have a motion? Counsel Whiting?
I'll offer a motion to direct staff to prepare an alternative, alternative ordinance with all the zoning and paperwork and public hearings.
Is there anything more?
And to clarify, it would be to approve the regiding and rezoning request at the next meeting of the council, which is September 4th.
Isn't that what I said?
That's exactly what I heard.
Do we have a, do we have a second? Counsel Lehman?
Before we move on, if I understand what the city attorney is, is trying to say to me, that action as we propose it would be contingent on completion of the land use review period. In other words, what we will endeavor to put in front of you is an action that says your intent is to grant the land use and zoning change, but the zoning change and land use change will not take effect until we go through the adjacent jurisdiction Metropolitan Council review.
So this won't happen over...
Does that address what you were seeking, Jim?
Okay. Counsel Lehman?
The, so, that's fine, but do you want that as an amendment to the motion?
No, well...
I think the appropriate motion would be direct staff to take the appropriate steps to proceed with the rezoning of the property from business park to BI and to change the land use classification. That's what I...
Regiding the property, kind of plan.
I can accept that verbiage.
Yep. All right. We're good.
All right. You accept that, Counsel Lehman?
Yep.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Thompson, just to make sure we're clear, everything's good? Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Four to zero unanimously for those of here, I suppose.
Can we take a short break?
Yeah, sure.
Motion for a five-minute break?
Second.
Second, a motion for a five-minute break, Counsel Lehman, second by Counsel Whiting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? We are in a five-minute break.
See you in ten.